Madam Chairman, and members of the audience, could please remain standing, please. A moment of silence for Sergeant Paul Tenney, former SRO for our school system, pastor of cancer, along with educator and coach John Riley, Woburn Public Schools staff member as well. A moment of silence for those individuals, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malrennan. Could the Superintendent Secretary of the School Committee please call the roll?
Mr. Austin.
Present.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yeah.
Ms. Cormier.
Present.
Mr. Lipsit.
Present.
Mr. Morenne.
Present.
Ms. Wetzel.
Present.
Ms. Crowley.
Present.
So first on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. And remind me, Mr. Lipsit, I don't do anything with this.
We just make a motion and approve it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We'll make the motion.
I will accept a motion.
I will make the motion.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. And public comment, is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the school committee? Seeing none, okay, moving on. City Council Liaison to the school committee is Mr. Viola in the audience.
No comment.
He has no comment tonight, thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Viola and also Mayor Concanon. Thank you for coming tonight, gentlemen. Student representative to the school committee, I see that we have one, I met Caitlin. I'm so thrilled to have you here tonight. Would you like to give us a report?
Yep.
Thank you.
So, hi, I'm Caitlin. I'm a junior at the high school. I wanted to start off by talking about our sports teams. So recently, our wrestling team, which I'm a part of, won against Winchester for the first time in over 20 years. And then basketball, boys and girls have been having a pretty good season. The boys had a good win against Belmont, and like I said, the girls are doing pretty well. Hockey, the girls and boys both beat Winchester. I noticed gymnastics had one of their first meets of the season, and so I hope they're doing well. Science team, they've had a pretty good year. They had three meets so far. They've placed third, first, and third. Overall, they're second place in the league. As for social events, we haven't had a lot. We had the freshman dance pretty recently, but other than that, not much. We have mid-years coming up next week, so that'll be pretty big. I'm pretty excited for them. I like the half-days. Yeah. But yeah, that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you so much, and I apologize. Caitlin, what is your last name?
Castaldi.
Oh, Castaldi, okay. Does anyone have any questions for student representatives Castaldi? Mr. Morenne.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. If I could, first of all, congratulations on the girls' success, as well as the streak being broken for Winchester 23 years. I think it's been, that's fantastic. On the policy subcommittee with Ms. Cormier, we're going to be bringing up the topic of students' cell phones, and since Jared Jr., it will involve you or may involve you. Just off the top of your head, you know, what you would think about the cellphone usage as a student in the school system? Nothing concrete, just your thoughts and ideas as far as usage of a cellphone in the building?
I think the use of a cellphone in the classroom is pretty detrimental to education overall. I think a lot of the classes that I take are higher level, so I'm in a lot of APs and honors. But, so I don't see a lot of those issues because most of the kids I'm around are highly driven. But when you go down to college prep level or an intro level, that's when you really see them struggling because, you know, whether it's a lack of discipline or a lack of drive, they, you know, the phones tend to get in the way and create a big distraction.
Okay, thank you. I just want your, you know, the students' opinions. My opinion's going around about it, but nice to hear your opinion as well, so appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Any further questions for student representative Castaldi? You are welcome to stay and listen to our debate and also add to the debate if you would like, or you may be dismissed. Whatever, thank you. Thank you very much for your thoughtful comments. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Caitlin.
All right, moving on to reports and presentation of superintendent and staff. First on board, we have our school committee protocols. That was initially brought to us by Mr. Lipsit. And every year going forward, we will now be signing school committee protocols as to how we run our meetings, deal with the public, communication. Mr. Lipsit, would you like to just give a quick little ditty on what they are?
Sure, I'm all about ditties. Let's do, so I'm going to read the introduction, that didn't, but I'm going to read the introduction as written here, that we passed. These were adopted by the committee on December 14th of 2022. And so this will be the third year that we have signed our school committee protocols. As elected members of the Woburn School Committee, we, including the superintendent, accept the high honor and trust that has been placed in us to represent the needs of all our students first and foremost. In order to live up to this responsibility, we hereby publicly commit, both collectively and individually, to the following protocols. And what follows are a list that was created through the precursor to the Community Relations Subcommittee, Communication Subcommittee, regarding simply how the committee interacts with each other, how we interact with the public, and how we conduct our meetings. So I'm going to send this around for committee signatures, as we have done in previous years. Mr. Austin, would you like to give the honor?
Yes.
So everyone knows, we've signed these before, but if anyone needs more time to review them, we can do that as well. But I think I'm seeing some consensus that we're ready to sign these tonight.
And these are unchanged for previous versions.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Lipsit, I appreciate that. So I'll move on with the meeting while members pass that around, I think. Okay. Next, we have Woburn Public Schools Middle School Reading Specialist Introduction and Update. Dr. Crowley, would you like to set us up for that, tee us up?
Sure, this, so this is a new position this year, and it's worked, or last year, sorry, this is the second year. It's worked out incredibly well. You can walk up while I'm.
As a drop role.
Yeah. And so Ms. Gillis is here, she's the 6-8 Humanities Coordinator, but the Lories are also here to talk through their roles, what they've done in these positions, and hopefully you'll be able to learn. And we've been in, actually, I've been in, I'm going to say your name wrong, Lori Chardier.
Sorry, Kelman, yeah.
Kelman, yeah, so, you know, so anyway, we, you know, and spent time on one of the Fridays in your, in your class. And so it's really great to go in and see kids learning and teachers doing what you do best, which is teach. So without further ado, I will put up your slide deck, and then you can, I'll just, I'm the clicker of the thing, so I'll just, you can just say beep, or whatever, however you want me to, to move the slides.
Hi, I'm Abby Gillis. I've met all of you before, but 6-8 Humanities Coordinator. And I have had the amazing pleasure of working with these two women for the last 18 months, a year and a half. When we first were interviewing for this position, it was going to be a shared position between the Joyce and the Kennedy, which we laugh about. And when we go through what the last 18 months has been, you're going to understand why that is so funny, and how just logistically that will work. So luckily, the stars aligned for us, that we were able to get a reading specialist in each building. And so the three of us have worked very collaboratively. It's more on them. They've done more of the heavy lift, and I've kind of just been there to facilitate and help in any way that I can to kind of build the structure that we currently have. And so we're going to just give them a second to introduce themselves, and then I'll kind of frame out the presentation will unfold.
Hi, my name is Laura Molson. I'm the reading specialist here at the Joyce. Prior to this, I worked in Andover Public Schools, and I'm actually a private school at the elementary level. I started my teaching career as a middle school history teacher at Roxbury Prep Charter School in the Boston Public School System. And it was my years there that inspired me to go back to school to become a reading specialist. Most of my students were very far below grade level reading, and it was heartbreaking because they could not access the curriculum I was teaching. So I wanted the tools to be able to spread my love of literacy and make reading accessible for everybody. On a personal note, I've been married for 23 years. I have three children, two in college, and my youngest is a junior in high school.
I'm Laurie Diamond. My maiden name was Chardier, so that's why a lot of people prefer to me as Laurie Chardier. So I have been working in Republic Schools for 24 years. Started out as a special education teacher, then moved to a general ed classroom about four years later. I stayed in that sixth grade classroom for the duration of, for the majority of my career, until I decided I was inspired to, when I saw this job posting come up, I was like, I want to try something new. So let's do this. I've always had a love for literacy. So when I was a general education teacher, I was teaching primarily science, but at different portions, I taught pretty much every subject. And the second place to my heart after science was literacy. And I was always integrating it throughout the science content, and just trying to encourage kids, you know, give them strategies. Something that was a personal reason for making the shift is that my college roommate and closest friend, her daughter was dyslexic. And so as she was struggling with being a mom, being an educator, and trying to step back from that parenting role of, you know, parenting a child with dyslexia, I was her sounding board. And so my daughter also struggled with, she had, you know, COVID and all of the other things that kind of led to her, you know, fourth grade teacher not really being there. So she really struggled, and I had stepped in, and I said, okay, let's do this. We can either get a tutor, or mom can do this. So she allowed me to, believe it or not, she was not stubborn for a hot second, and we made a lot of progress. And I felt so much joy being able to help my own child, be able to kind of overcome her challenges. So that's kind of how I stepped into this role. And I think Laura and myself, like, we have clicked from day one. And having Abby as a leader, our fearless leader, who, and Courtney can probably attest to, she, like, last year, it was like, where is all Abby's time being spent? And sorry, we were stealing hers, because we were just, we needed a positive sounding board. Not that we can't make, you know, choices ourself, but we wanted to make sure that we were, you know, coming up with a good, positive structure.
Abby's very patient. All right, so the framing of the presentation is where we started from. So when it was like, okay, we have these two new positions, and what does it mean? And like, the three of us kind of looked at each other and was like, what do we do? You know, there was a lot of trial and error and figuring out what resources made the most sense for the kids in front of, in front of them. And so where we started from, where we are now, so the current here, some of the changes and shifts that we've made, and then kind of our dream of where we wanted to go. I joked with them that when we were putting this together, I wanted to like the Emerald City in that lesson. And I was like, copyright infringement, I don't need to get anything with that. So we'll just put some other vision boards in there. But so that's kind of like the frame, and the majority of it is going to be these ladies. And then I'll do a little bit of nerdy data for the end of the meeting for you all.
All right, so I guess I am, so where we started. It's amazing how much we accomplished, quite honestly, and not like to swear or warn, but how much we actually just dug in with both feet, and we just got, I don't know, just from the very beginning, we were just like, go. All right. So we started with Wilson training. Both of us underwent a practicum last year, and we are Wilson Level One practitioners. So we are fully certified. I worked with an eighth grade student last year, one-on-one, four days a week. He made tremendous progress. It was so sad that I chose an eighth grade student, because then he's now at the high school. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to continue on with him. But it was really eye-opening. Again, I said, my friend's daughter has dyslexia. So Wilson can be a program that is specifically for, the training that we went through could be you working with dyslexic children, or kids with language-based learning disabilities. And so it kind of felt like I was back in my wheelhouse, my original wheelhouse of like, when I started owning education, I was a special ed teacher. We also went through crafting minds training, and that was through court, it was called morphology anthology. It really focused on the importance of morphology. So yes, you can do phonics instructions with middle school children, but it's even more beneficial to get, morphology is really like Latin roots and bases and prefixes and suffixes, and really how those can be so, such a driving force in helping kids be able to attack really big, we call them multi-syllabic words, so words that have five syllables, and those really challenging words at the middle school level for them. And so that kind of gave us another, a kind of place to go. So if we weren't doing Wilson, we kind of started to take pieces of that. Laura can speak a little bit more to the Great Leaks. I haven't really done that much with Great Leaks, but Laura and I both piloted, Nish tried, decided to pilot a complimentary, like, computer-based component. So last year, I piloted towards the end of the school year, something called Read Naturally. And it's a really structured program. It allows you to differentiate wherever the child is at. You can determine what their level is, and then you put them on the program. They're not on it completely independently, but as they're going through, you're really trying to get them to gain fluency. A lot of the readers in the middle school are accurate, meaning that can correctly, like, they can correctly say the word, but they are very disfluent. So it's very choppy, and therefore, it's impacting their comprehension. So both of these programs, and then Laura, you were doing the piloting of Flow Fluency.
Yeah.
Last year. And again, the programs are pretty similar. The big difference is cost. So Read Naturally, we have a ton of, the special ed department has a ton of those licenses. We decided this year, as a group, to go with, in the tier two. So we're not, mostly, we're not working with special needs children. We're working with, you know, struggling learners in the general ed population. And so we mostly decided to go with Flow Fluency because it was cost-effective. And also, it had a lot of the same teachers as Read Naturally. The kids really like it. They can see their growth. They get so excited when they, like, they, basically, they do something called cold reading. They read the story for the first time. They've never read the story. Nobody's ever, like, you know, gone over anything with them. And then they get kind of a words per minute score. And then what it allows, and then basically, I go in as a teacher, and I can mark individual errors. So if the child keeps making a specific kind of error, I can say, okay, this is really what I need to focus on with this particular child. So I really like that component. So there is some independence in this, that the kids learn how to do what's called echo reading. The kids, if you want me to explain what that is, it's kind of what it sounds like. So basically, the kids will get that same passage again. And there's lots of research out there, the Science of Reading talks about having kids do repeated reading. So this program really speaks to that research. And it allows the student to do repeated reading. So the child will get that story again, and they're, and of course, with prompting at first, they are instructed that they listen to the computer, read the sentence, the passage, but at each sentence, they have to pause. And then they have to repeat the sentence. And they're trying to kind of duplicate the kind of fluency that they're hearing in the program. And then it kind of goes on, and there's different things, components that they have to do. And at the end, we end up sitting together again, and we do what's something called the hot timing. And it's really, the kids have a lot of opportunities of practice throughout this, and they love seeing when they've met their goal. They get so excited when they've met their goal. And then we sit together, and I kind of go over this thing called prosody. There's like a rubric that goes along with it. And the, what was your pace like? Was it conversational? Was it choppy? Was it, you know, slow and fast? And so I didn't use this program as much last year as I am using it this year. So I got, I kind of junk-chipped it a little bit, but this program is amazing. And the kids really like it, and I love how they're so engaged by it. A lot of the hard-to-reach kids, there are a lot of eighth grade boys that are the hard-to-reach kiddos, they love to be competitive with themselves, right? And it's cool, it's like this great use of, like, I don't know, technology. You know, I'm not all about technology all the time. I think it's a good balance in our, our classes now. So Laura, I think I've spoken up.
Wow. Well, I will just say too, so all of those, those are like the training, so even within all of the training that they did, they still were working with children, too. So I think that last raised a lot of, kind of, front-loading the training for them, but then also they'll speak a little bit to the, and designing our own training.
Correct, yeah, I think that's, yeah, the last bullet there is that Laura and another counterpart, her, she's part of our PLC, we have a professional learning community that has two special ed reading specialists, and Laura and myself and Abby. And we meet bi-weekly. We did, we met, like, weekly, daily, I don't know, everything last year, but, but yeah, so we developed our, I, we have gone through, Star had come out and given us training, and then I took what I thought would be relatable to the classroom teachers, and then made a Star training. And that was part of our Choice PV. And Laura and Nicole made an amazing one on visualization.
To teach about visualizing when you read, to teach the teachers how to maybe bring that into their classrooms. So that was fun.
Yeah.
Okay. So when we started to design our intervention strategies and our lessons, we really focused on the five components or pillars of reading. Right? Laura and I really pull three of these that we're focusing on, because an interventionist should be focusing on these things. Vocabulary, phonics, which encompasses decoding, encoding, and now this morphology piece, and fluency. Okay? We do touch as much as we can on comprehension in our rooms, but that is something that really students should be getting in their tier one core content classes, because we just don't have time to do it all. Especially me, I only can see my kids twice a week. So 80 minutes is not enough to do it all. But studies have shown that if a student is a disfluent reader, their brain energy is going to decoding words and phrases. So there's no energy or time left for them to comprehend. So they're losing that entire comprehension piece. So Laura and I are really focusing on the kids, students whose fluency scores are the lowest. We want to get them up to a point where they can read fluently, not only to us, but also to themselves in their head. The comprehension piece should then follow in a perfect world. So that's what we have been focusing on. Oh, and I was going to say, we've been using a lot of, sorry, a lot of systems, not only Flow Fluency, but we've also designed things, and we have seen some good success with a lot of our students.
All right, so back to me. I'm going to try to breathe. So yeah, so we identified who we are working with by using initially the STAR Renaissance data. It's a universal screener. And what that basically means is that it's going to identify, you know, areas of need that the students have within literacy. Some major areas of deficit across the school, across the Kennedy are information, reading informational texts. So again, going back to where I came from, science texts are very difficult to read. Social studies are also difficult for the kids to read. Another area that was, that came up as a red flag is that kids are not reading enough complex texts, right? They're going to like, it's fine that the kids love graphic novels these days, and there's nothing wrong with that, but they also have to push themselves to read things that are more complex, instead of shying away from it. So that was another area that had come up. And then the third area really was the vocabulary, the vocabulary that really needs to strengthen. So that's really why we started going into morphology. The groups, or the population that I pretty much am working with are students who were struggling in general education classes. And again, I didn't just, once we got STAR data, we didn't just leave it at that. We started to bring the kids into like a one-on-one setting. We tried, started giving them phonics screeners, where we could see if they had holes from their elementary. And we also started doing the DIBELS. So the DIBELS looks at oral reading fluency, and it also looks at the maze part of it, is what you give in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. It looks at more comprehension. So those are the things that we looked at in addition to the STAR. Even though STAR is a great tool, I thought it was helpful, we both thought it was helpful to use other kind of assessments. So in terms of population, mostly I'm working with general ed, but you'll have the occasional ML student where they're like at a loss. They're like, we don't know, we, this is an advanced child, an advanced multilingual learner, and we don't know what to do with this child. So then they, they put the child through, like, the IEP process, and the kid, the child does not qualify. And then they're like, well, what do we do? Please, take this child. Can you see if you can do anything? And I have this wonderful success story with this Portuguese speaker, a native speaker. He's been with me since the beginning of this program, and he's made leaps and bounds. He's finally finding success in his general education classes. He's having success in his multilingual learner classes. And it's slow. It's very slow for him, but he, but he's making that progress. He's building that confidence. And so that's been really awesome. Sometimes a student will wiggle their way into my schedule, like a parent, like, last year, we did it, up until January, we did not have a special ed reading specialist at the Kennedy. We had one at the Joyce, but we did not have one at the Kennedy. So again, the teachers were like, please, can you take this child? Of course, I'll take this child. I know the child's on an IEP, but, you know, I'll take that child. That child did really, really well. And by the end of the year, he was a seventh grade boy. By the end of the year, he actually had moved out of intervention. So that was another really big success. The grouping is kind of strange. Research shows that like two to four is the ideal, the ideal, like, group, grouping that you would want. But of course, I want to help everyone, so I went a little bit beyond that, and it seems to be working, right? So that's why, what I learned from last year is that it seemed to work. It's not ideal, but it worked. Most of the groups, as Laura said, at the Kennedy and Joyce, are peering meet two times a week. The schedule, the middle school schedule is very difficult to try to integrate this. And I was lucky enough, sixth grade has meeting block, that means the block I need to block. So I was able to take students during that block, and they, I got to meet with them every day. It's amazing when you get to work with kids every single day on intervention. You really see the progress. Even though it might be slow, it's, it's amazing when you see that progress. And then, as I mentioned before, the practicum students, I met four times a week, one-on-one. And then another big kind of shout-out to my students' hard work, and my work as well, is that eight, 11 eighth graders were in the blue category, the meeting expectations category, by the end of the school year. So that was, it was, the eighth graders were not in my wheelhouse, and they're in my wheelhouse now. But it took some time for me to get adjusted. I was used to sixth graders, you know, and it's a big difference. But we figured it out.
Okay. So along the same lines, the students are universally taking the STAR assessment. And then I wanted, we wanted to do DIBELS on top of that. I love DIBELS because, and I know you can do it online, but I like the contact with the kids. So I do it sort of the old-fashioned paper way, so I can actually see them doing it. Then we can have a conversation about the text, which, so you can actually see where the breakdown is happening, and then the comprehension piece that they do on their own. So, and it's very quick. You can do a child's DIBELS in six minutes. So it's just a quick way to catch anything that maybe the STAR missed, or maybe the STAR, they didn't do as well in the STAR, but they're very fluent readers. So it's just an extra net to catch things. So again, last year, oh, I had a lot of ML students last year. I think I had almost 20. And I had, because of the constraints at Joyce, I think we have a little bit more of a scheduling constraint, because we, Tom likes to do it by term, right? I had groups of 10, which is way too big for an intervention group. So then I subdivided them, but then I wasn't meeting them as much, because I'd have to meet this group with three for two times a week, and then this group only once a week. So it was really kind of cut and paste and fit in when I could. Let's see, what else? Oh, and I had the SSR block, so I did do eighth period, I had my practicum student. I met her in the morning at 7:00 AM. She would come in. She was a seventh grader. She's actually a special ed student. She's very upset with me that she doesn't see me anymore. So she said, she's wondering why. So by January, when I retested, we retested the kids, I had eight students. So by January, when I retested the kids, I had eight students tested out across the board based on their fluency and comprehension. Six new came in and then an additional seven tested out in June. Is there one more? Oh, is it me now?
All right, so where we are at, so I think I've already spoken to this a little bit. Morphing Magic is the name of the program that we have brought in. And Matt, would you mind clicking on the Morphing Blue, Morphing Magic thing? So the program didn't come with a lot of, it came with these great little posters that are about eight and a half by 11. But it didn't really come, it came with this great, you know, spiral bound book. But the teachers, since we're asking them, the general ed teachers, to kind of help with the lift of this integration, we asked them to, we said, okay, what would be helpful for you? And some of them said, oh, well, it would be really nice if there was a slideshow that could go along with this. So we came up with kind of a structured literacy slideshow that goes out every Friday. And so the general ed English teachers get this slideshow. We send it to everybody, everybody in both schools. But really what the benefit of this is, is that both middle schools are exactly on the same page. They're both getting, you know, they still have, you know, creative freedoms within their classroom. But this is meant to be a very short amount of time each day that they really have to spend on this. It starts, as you can see, very simple with suffixes like S and ES. And then it progresses, the way we rolled it up, we progressed from suffixes to prefixes. And now we're on a second Latin root. So last week we were on port, and this week we are on track. And we tried at this point, if Matt's role were.
All tracked this one.
If Matt's role's dead, you'll see, this is a very long slideshow, but around slide 80.
Let's do it all.
Around slide 80, don't quote me. I believe around slide 80 is where we get to track. And so what we really tried to do with the kids is that we try to use Morphing Magic. Plus we know middle school kids love games and we try to gamify it a little bit for them. We also try to pull in, like right now, for example, we're pulling in California wildfires. So we created some tasks that support this and that complement the, not port, but complement track. And there's tractors being used to create firewalls in California right now as they're undergoing, you know, the recovery. So we're really trying to get that informational tax, which was a huge weakness schoolwide and district wide. And we're really trying to embed it with the morphology. And we're trying to give the general ed teachers something so that they're like, hey, we have something to go off of. Rather than just a spiral bound notebook that came with the program and this tiny little poster. So we're trying to really integrate those things in. And from the feedback that I've gotten, and again, I want us to send out a survey to the teachers at the end of the year. Was this helpful, was it not? But we wanted to give teachers something that would make the lift of integrating any programs up easier. And we've come up with a much more structured literacy routine, as Laura mentioned before. The three main areas that we're trying to focus on are phonics, fluency. And vocabulary, yeah, influencing. And basically our structured literacy routine really focuses on that. I know the elementary level really focused on that last year. But I feel like we're, we're getting closer and closer to enailing down like a real structure that we're like, okay, we like this. This works for me, this works for the kids, they get it. And with that structure, they really, the goal is, we do have a lot of absenteeism. We'll say with the population that we're working with, we are noticing that the absenteeism is a bit of a problem. When you're seeing kids twice a week, that's a problem. And maybe these kids are in this situation because of some of their absenteeism. But really, the structured routine should help when they come back from being out. They still know what the structure is, you know what I mean? And so now we're on to Joyce.
Oh, okay, so as Lori said, we tried to integrate this across the curriculum. I actually like to call it Roots Across the Curriculum. That's sort of my name for the morphology program. Are you laughing at me?
Yeah.
I was very, I was very excited to point that. And so what it looks like at the Joyce, I can speak, and I'm sure it's the same with you. On Friday, sometime before lunch, I will send a staff-like email to announce what the next week's morphine will be. I'll give a definition, its origin, I'll use it in a sentence. I will give teachers some ideas beside Lori's slideshow and how they could use it in the classroom. Simple things, games they could do really fast so a teacher doesn't have to go and do that extra planning. We don't want it to be extra work, right? So that happened on Friday. And then I go down to the mailroom and I mail everyone a sign for their week. They should be, we are hoping that we're seeing these in every classroom, front and center, on a word wall, something. Most people are doing it. The idea is that the kids are seeing this visual everywhere in the school. So down in gym class, they should be seeing the roots, the prefixes, the suffixes. It's just supposed to come part of the fold of literacy. And most, most teachers are doing some really cool and fun boards and things like that. Then what do I do? So after I mail it, I said, Tom, then we'll take, we ask Tom to use the board up in front. And he'll take my email and I like to incorporate a staff member as much as possible. I had Charlie and Maureen being one picture as well to model the morphine of the week. So this is Ms. Ruderman, who's one of our special ed teachers. I blew up a pass port for her, this was obviously for port. And so she's on, so the kids get a visual everywhere, everywhere they're going. I do another board upstairs. And then I like to go downstairs Monday mornings and do my, what the students say is a very cringey announcement. I will announce the morphine of the week. And I have a sign-off that they think is really embarrassing, but I think it's great. And it really, it makes us have a little bit of a relationship about the morphine. So they're buying into it.
And what is it? Yeah.
The catchphrase at the end, after I announce the morphine, define it, use it in a sentence, I say, "May the morphine be with you." And they look at me and go, this is most horrible. But they remember it.
Yeah, so this is an example of the Kennedy. So similar to Laura, I do an announcement on Monday morning as well. I try to bring some TikTok flavor into it. So mine is, mine is not let the morphine be with you, but it's be mindful, be demure, be cutesy. And so, and so they're very mindful as they're going around the school. And they'll be like, you didn't say demure today. You know, they get really upset, but it is so funny. I have kids all over the school coming up to us, again, making great connections. I had a girl, we came up with a morphine rap. And at the Kennedy, there was just regular students that wanted to rap with us. They wanted to do the morphine rap, so you guys missed it, I'm not rapping right now. But, but there it is. That was not online. But yes, three students and myself, who I do not work with, came to rap, do the morphology rap last week, last Monday. So what is also in the school, when you first walk into the Kennedy, you'll see these sentence strips. And again, I try to take students who are in the school. For example, the freshmen, as Brennan Grammer and Liam Murphy, fervently played street hockey and won the Kennedy Cup. So we have a little competition at the Kennedy, they play street hockey out in the courtyard. And so we were trying to, at that point, we were working on the suffix L-WAD. And so we tried to kind of incorporate students into these sentence strips. Also positive things that are being done around the Kennedy. For example, I, along with Mrs. Claflin, helped run the Builders Club. And so we collected over $500 for Builders Club for breast cancer awareness. So we kind of incorporated that with the suffix full. And so we just kind of are constantly trying to incorporate, incorporate, incorporate throughout the curriculum. And then yours is the wonderful one.
Oh, I have a board outside my old room that I've sort of taken over. So that's much greater than that, but I do Root of the Week. So I feature them again up there and I put some words up for the kids. So when they're walking by, they can just see it again. And I put in my decorative roots to represent Root.
And then this is a Wilson board, just in case you've never seen a Wilson board. I still incorporate it, even though I'm not fully using the Wilson program right now. But yeah, it basically just shows the kids how to kind of use the Wilson board to break apart the suffix, the prefix, and then the root. And then we always try to write a sentence on the board, the dentist extracted my tooth. And then they have kind of a little recording sheet. So that paper on the right is a recording sheet, it kind of goes in their binder that we keep and they constantly will look back. We often will capture words that they're having trouble with pronouncing and we'll, we'll use the same strategy. Oh my gosh, we can.
Sorry.
So basically this year, we've changed up the group slightly. I tried to go a little smaller this year with the groups to see how big of an impact or difference that would make. So that's why I'm taking on smaller numbers. We were, like, maybe you didn't know how many, I thought, oh, I should do 26 graders, 27 graders, and 28 graders. And that's kind of how I did it last year. And again, it worked, but could be more effective. And I guess this is my little experiment this year. So that's why you'll see that some of my numbers of my group rates are smaller this year. And then I, this year I was able to find a way, there are some really struggling boys who are in eighth grade who are struggling. So I wanted to take them on three times, I would like to take them on every day, but the schedule again is very binding. So I got a way to, Guidance and I decided to figure out a creative way to figure out how we could see them three times a week. And so I did that. I also have one sixth, three group that I do daily, one seventh group that I do daily, and it's only two students. And they actually are both ML students, they're advanced ML students, but they were just really, really struggling in their ML classes and their general ed classes. And then I have one eighth grade group daily. And kind of like, we're doing a lot of modeling. So this image right here, I do, we do, you do together, you do independently. It's kind of the, if you came into my room and you wanted to know what the structure was all about, that's really how we do it, I model, right, of the story, then we do the story together. Again, we might be using that echo reading or choral reading. And then, and they'll do it together with a partner and then they're doing it together independently. And I really am constantly doing it that way. So again, even if the child is absent, they know the structure.
Back to me. I had, I was lucky enough to have a little more control over my schedule this year to actually make my own groupings. So I've been able to make them a little more homogeneous because you don't want a student who's reading 60 words per minute with a student who's reading 110, it's just, it doesn't work great. I mean, it made it work last year, but it's not ideal. So I was able to sort of manipulate my schedule. You can see, I usually, the most I have is five students. There's one boy in eighth grade who I see on his own, I made that, I did that on purpose. I had him last year, he's really struggling and gets distracted. So I talked to Tom and I'm able to see him one-to-one because he needs it. I did pick up three struggling ML students, I made them in my schedule for them because one of them's in eighth grade and we're worried about what the transition to high school is going to look like for him. As of January, for this January, five students have tested out already based on, again, the same thing, the DIBELS fluency, the maze comprehension. One of them I had last year and his score is amazing, so I haven't told him his thinking yet. But really phenomenal growth. And then seven new students who I don't know, I've been testing kids who have fallen down and they're going to come in. So it's kind of, it's got to be a little bit of a fluid situation, which I'll say.
Yeah, and I just forgot to mention, I have three sixth graders that I'm moving out because next week's a marking term, so this is when we decided to make a nice transition time. Okay, when a term is ending, then we can take new students. And so I'm going to take, three are moving out and I'm picking six new ones in.
This is, this is what I did, Lori does probably do the same thing, it's just a snapshot of, this is all my current students' data. No names, Tom, you. This is actually just their DIBELS data, in another side of it, I have their STAR data. Anybody in green in the winter has made, you can see they're making progress. Yellow is progress from red, it connects pretty self-explanably. On the right-hand side with my students, I do benchmark, I mean, sorry, progress monitoring with them at least twice or three times a month, sometimes I try to do it once a week. It's just one-to-one, pretty fast, a progress monitoring passage, counting, we'll discuss it quickly. And while I'm meeting with one student, the other, the rest of the kids are on to fluency or doing something independently. So these are their scores. You know, some student was originally reading 110 words in eighth grade and now is up to 160 words per minute. So the fluency has increased. It's not for everybody, but you can see some, a lot of growth in some of these kids, which is very exciting. Oh, and I also, I graph them on a different graph that is in their folder and they love to see the dots moving up. And when one week they're having trouble and it goes down, they're not so happy. So they really like to see the growth.
And I do that kind of, that same kind of visualization with them so they can see their progress. So this is just, this is just showing what my passion looks like. We have a little video up, we have this wonderful tool, which is an interactive, kind of basically I have. When we do do some morphology-based games, the kids can come up and actually interact on that board. It's very engaging for them, they love, there's a game show version of the game. This is a program called, what is it, Word Wall?
Word Wall.
Word Wall Online. And it's just taking some of that morphology, making it more interactive for them. Mostly the, on the right-hand side of the table is really where the kids are working closely, like with them. If there's a space for me at that table, I'm with them. The Wilson board and the objectives are up on the top slide to the right. And we do something with syllables, so the types of syllables. And then this is the morphology board that has grown since September. Every time we add something new, it gets added onto the tree for the roots that we've had so far. We only had two, but we also made one of these in the Kennedy hallway. And again, the kids like to be able to go by that board and they always have something to say about the board, you know, whether they're your student or, whether they're my student or not.
This is my room, which is very different from last year. I was in the old cooking room last year, which was really great when you're trying to be quietly with a student. So I moved into this nice cozy little, were those closets a room? I don't know what it was. It's a small room, but it's perfect because you don't, I don't want a giant space, I want it to be cozy. So I made my tree last year, I sewed that together myself so it's an interactive tree. We can move suffixes and prefixes and make words. I don't have track up there, I took the picture too soon. I got cozy corners, same thing, the Wilson stuff. Sometimes I bought two really nice rugs, sometimes I'll get on the floor and we'll read on the floor. Like, we like to move around and try different things. I have a whole book collection on this side that you can't see, but it's really about giving them a space to love, to learn. To love, to grow, I mean, to love to read.
Grow and read.
Grow and read, but a nice cozy space. So maybe we'll talk about. I do not have the nice interactive board, I have the 1960s.
Isn't that what you would like?
Yes, I have a 1960s whiteboard with a projector on wheels. So I, my kids can't fudge anything.
So you can see why I've been excited to work with them because they've done so much over the time that they've been in these roles. So this is where I was going to share a little bit of the data for this year so that you can kind of see. And then that's going to then launch us into the where we'd like to go after talking a little bit about the data. And so I wanted to put this up here because I know that Mr. Coily and Mr. Nelson were in here talking about their student improvement goals not too long ago. And so I did want to just reflect there that the winter data that we just, so the students took the STAR assessment for the winter right before break. So in looking at that data, they're on their way to meeting that school improvement goal. Actually, eighth grade is already at that mark of 60% and then the other two are not fully. And this is just mid-year, so hopefully we'll, we'll surpass the goal that they set for the at or be far above typical growth on that STAR assessment. Yeah, so that's what that was. But what these two graphs are for the Joyce and for the Kennedy is this is showing after the winter assessment, there, there is like a correlation report that you can pull for like the outlook of how students would perform on the MCAS. So if our students were to take the MCAS today, this is what the projection would look like for the scores. Now, they're halfway through the year, so they're saying like sixth grade. So they're saying like sixth grade, that first graph there, that's where they would be right now, halfway through sixth grade on sixth grade standards. So you would expect to see those middle bars bigger than, hopefully, the red bar would be the smallest. But you would expect that this is going to continue to progress throughout the year because they've only gotten half of the year so far of their, of their grade level standards. So this is nice for the teachers to look at too because then you know have a sense of a projection of how students are doing. We actually are looking again at the winter data in my PLCs at the Kennedy and the Joyce this rotation to see how students did on the standards so that we can have the conversations about what we think might be some good shifts to make to try to target them. So this is, that was the Joyce and this is the Kennedy. And that's to say, if you're looking at the red, that's where when we're going through the testing and pulling students, that these two women are going to then maybe further test to see if we're going to pull them in for intervention. It's the students in red. So at the Joyce, I believe it was 122 students that were in the red, and at the Kennedy it was 117. And so not all of those students are students that would be going into that tier-two intervention because there's many reasons why they might be scoring in the red. And that's why we do that other layer of testing. But it's good for two reasons because it's to flag students that might go into tier-two, but it's also good for us to note as well as, as the tier-one, to say, how are we going to support? And to their point, Morphi Magic is that tier-one kind of solution that we decided on for this year. And right now, everybody in the school, in both schools, they're getting the same Morphi. So it's a full-school initiative. Next year, the rollout will be that sixth grade is following the same scope and sequences this year. Seventh grade will have a new one that seventh and eighth grade are following. And then the following year, they'll all be on their own so that students are getting new Morphis every single year. And so hopefully that will just help their vocabulary develop that much more. So I wanted to put those up there with those numbers as kind of like a flag to say like 117, 122, one of each of them. So we're, we're doing the best that we can to catch the kids that we can bring into intervention with one in each building, but also tier-one trying to figure out. And then that also leads into this, which is I just wanted to remind the committee about our partnership with DUCY and the Tier Literacy Academy, which our TA Jen Quinn comes monthly to work with Paige Crowley and with me. And so we've been, she's been really helpful in kind of talking through some of the tiered stuff that we've been doing with these women, but also in looking at curriculum and all of the conversations around what the data's showing and then what we can maybe be doing. And then also the Inclusive Academy, which is the UDL focus, which is those instructional practices that can kind of help reach all students. And then like I mentioned, the PLCs, we're looking at the data. And so we're having conversations around instructional shifts or even just, you know, kind of auditing the curriculum to make sure that we are really hitting specific standards and where that's coming up and where we might need to kind of layer in some more stuff.
And just an interesting point, when we're thinking about those red areas, there's a lot of kids that are multilingual learners that are in that red area, right? We're not having beginners take the test, right? Because it's not fair of an assessment for them to take, right? But when they are advanced, they're taking it and they are a bulk of that red. Also additionally, I, students on IEPs are a bulk of that red. So we have to remember all these subgroups that we have within the context of the whole school population.
Well, for example, I just did the devils. So I, you said 110 were in the red?
I think it was 122 at the Joyce.
And by, by the time I filtered through with Tom's help, the students who were MLs on IEPs or in LEAP, I tested 34 of them. So it's about, I would say.
But there are still more kids that need help and we cannot unfortunately help them all.
We'd love to.
Yeah, we'd love to. We just need more hours in a day or more help.
We love ourselves to. Oh, okay. So I guess this is me.
Me?
Okay. So I'll just start from the bottom actually, as Lori just said. We are trying our best. We probably average have, on average each right now, 35 students.
I have like 45.
Right, but you're, yeah, yeah. So those are students who are at the very bottom, taking out the MLs, the LEAP, IEP kids. There are kids who are above them that we cannot reach, who need help, but we just, we can't do it all. So we, we are focusing on the students with the lowest fluency, decoding, high situation. So that's involved there. We need more of us. And we would love, you know, going forward, there's always room for growth. So more opportunities, we talked about, it'd be great to go to a literacy conference at some point, maybe next year, trainings. We would love, both like to go see how another middle school, great middle school does, not that these are great middle schools, but somebody who has the-
Somebody who's reading-
Reading intervention program, you know, structured and in place. We'd love to go see how they do it, how do they schedule it, what does it look like? Be a great little field trip. We've tried, we are trying to push into tier-one classrooms to be an extra support to teachers. I've offered it to everybody at Joyce. Are you doing something and your little group needs a comprehension support? I'm free, second in sixth period. Send me an email. So we really want to do that piece as well and get that a little, I don't know, more, not available, it is available, more understood that we are available to push into classes as well. Because that's a big part of being an interventionist, is going into the classroom if your student might be really struggling with a science article, we can help. And then just promoting school-wide literacy initiatives. Obviously, we have a big morphology portion this year. What else?
That would be a great idea.
Oh, about March Madness?
No, about the Morpho.
Well, I, I changed it to March Madness. So I want to do a Morpho. I don't know if you all see Pitch Perfect, but they do, what's it called? A ripoff. So I took, I want to do a Morpho, a school-wide morphology competition, maybe in March to place March Madness, but I have to figure out how a little bit.
They're not decided. Are you trying to do this yet?
I don't know if I have time, but we'll do it. So that's pretty much it. And then, you know, more literacy initiatives, like maybe take part in World Read Loud Day, April's Poetry Month, but we bring something in about that, guest authors. So we just have all these, three of us are literacy lovers and we just want to bring it to everybody.
I've also gone to Uber Public Library, trying to make connections with the teen room.
Yeah.
Trying to, you know, the teen room constantly now is sending me the calendar, which then I pass along to Mr. Nelson to put into his weekly newsletter. So we're just constantly trying to use all the resources within the community. And it is sad because, you know, both of these middle schools don't have libraries anymore. However, at the Kennedy, there's still so many books. And I talked, I wrote a proposal to Mr. Nelson last week with the Builders Club saying, quickly somehow revitalize, well, the library is partially at the Kennedy, a classroom, that's a Spanish classroom now. And then all the books that used to be part of the library are still there. And some kids cannot, they don't have the transportation to get to the public library. So it's disheartening to see them just sitting there. So Mr. Nelson and I had a conversation today. We're like, okay, let's, he said, I don't want you to put all the, he said, that might become a permanent classroom, so I don't want you to put all this effort into like making this space great when in reality, it may be like right now, Ms. Cuda-Burney, who's a teacher, she's there half of the day at Kennedy and half at Joyce, but it might become a full-time classroom and at which point that space is unfortunately, I guess, unusable. We just have no spaces left in, as we, we know from last year's research, we have no space left in any of these buildings, at Kennedy included. We now have to have teachers in the library, all the front library space. But we have so many resources that, that could be utilized.
Any questions?
There's a lot. There's a lot.
All right, so that was intense.
I was at like three hours.
I, I'm looking around to the committee to see who would like to start off. Mrs. Chisholm.
I just think this is excellent. I just, I'd be able to help kids that kind of went through the whole system and just failed themselves because they couldn't read. And if you guys just had a little more enthusiasm and, and do what this would be really, really good. I mean, you talk about going to a convention. I see you presenting at a convention because I really think that you, you have love heart and I think it shows. And I think our kids are benefiting and I hope that the parents out there appreciate the fact that this would be either a tutoring thing that they'd have to be paying for if we couldn't get it. And a lot of those families, I'm sure, couldn't do that. So this is why the kids fell for the cracks. But I'm very excited and this is, you know, wonderful. I hope we can multiply you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Chisholm. Anyone else? Mr. Lipsit?
I echo Mrs. Chisholm. Your energy is palpable and I know the kids feel it and I'm sure the staff feels it. I'm curious, you, you mentioned the schedule a couple of times. I'm curious, you know, what limitations you see with the current schedule? What would sort of your ideal be? What would you like to see change?
So I think Lori has the availability to teach kids from different, not elective, specials.
Yes, so there's a class called social emotional learning, which the kids need so badly. They need help. They need every class. And then I guess the question becomes, does reading trump these other classes? What does this, again, it's kind of like a Winlock situation, right? What does this child need? And you, you want them to have that well-rounded course experience in school. We want them to have it all. But at what point, I mean, these kids are sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And like you said, some of the eighth graders were like, oh my goodness, this is their like kind of last chance. Like, last, it's not really. You can learn to read at any point, but it becomes harder and harder. The gap becomes wider and wider. So it's just like, we really, so yeah, to answer your-
Well, I was going to say, so you're able to pull from specials. I am, I guess the constraint is I'm pulling students from a class called Read Skills, which means twice a week. That's for seventh and eighth grade. Sixth grade, I am able to take during Winlock, which I guess is different periods. Fifth period is the lunch block at Joyce. But I have three sixth grade groups, so that divided by, it's just, it's a little tricky. So that's where I am.
Yeah, so things-
Mine's a little more-
A little more rigid?
Rigid.
The other thing is that there's specialized programs in both schools. That, that takes away from some of the scheduling kind of nightmare. It is a kind of a nightmare. Because power school generates these schedules now. Every class is like completely mixed up for, throughout their whole day. So really to get things to like line up, like, okay, this child needs help and this child needs help, but like where does it like line up? You're like a game of, you know, it's really a crazy game of puzzle.
Right. And the other thing is too, sometimes these, these students might only need you for six weeks or eight weeks, but I can only move them in and out of the term. So maybe that student is taking a spot with somebody else. So it's, because an intervention should be really, it's flexible. It should be flexible. I mean, as flexible as you can be with scheduling because students might not need you for that long. They might, but they might not.
Yeah, I mean, the likelihood is that a lot of these kids do need us longer than those chunks of, of smaller windows.
Most kids need us all day.
But there are kids that, like you're saying, that there are these, this three sixth graders that I had taken on in September that are ready to move on. They're ready to fly, you know? And it's great to see that. But yeah, the, the schedule is really tricky. Guidance has helped me be able to kind of manipulate and get creative at the Kennedy. And I'm sure, I don't know what happened, I don't know what, what the principals are open to and things like that.
Thank you. And just one more. So, you know, reading specialists at the middle school level are relatively new in Weber. Do we have a sense of, in terms of surrounding communities or like communities, how many have reading specialists?
I can speak on that because I actually live in Andover and they're in every, they're in all the middle schools in Andover. There actually is one in the high school too. So, and I know North Andover does, so my surrounding towns do because, oh, there's always postings.
Right.
Well, not always, but there are. There often are postings, but I know because my kids went through that school system. So they're good.
I know recently a student left to go to Burlington and I, I said, please let, let the specialists reach out. I'd love to like build a connection with some other specialists. I'm on a Facebook group for specialists throughout the country, trying to get inspiration, trying to get, you know, other people's ideas on how we could possibly make this better. You know, seeing kids more days.
Yeah.
Whatever the people do from others.
More brains.
Well, thank you for, for everything that you've brought in, in a short time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsit. Ms. Wetzel?
Yes, thank you. This was an amazing presentation. I kept writing questions down and then scratching them out because you kept answering them, actually. So I have a lot of mess here that I'm going to try to shuffle through. But yeah, this is phenomenal. I think what you guys are doing is absolutely fantastic and I love seeing inside of your classrooms pictures or in person. It's been really refreshing and lovely. I did have a question. It kind of goes back to the scheduling piece a little bit because I assume it must be really hard because you don't know how long kids are going to stay in the program. And if a kid tests out a student, can they test back in?
Yes.
And so then they have to-
They love that.
Yeah.
I was, I was testing three previous students from last year today. They're not going to come back with me, but they were flagged on the STAR.
Got it.
So it can happen, yeah.
I have a boy that had unfortunate like personal things that were going on and he was doing tremendous and then this life-altering event happened in his life and he's back with me and his dad's like, you keep him forever. So, I mean, he's not happy with that his dad's on board with him. And another eighth grade parent, please can you keep him the whole year? Even if he tests out, I'm like, there's other kids that need help, you know? But the parents, when I have seen them, we have been in communication via email mostly. Occasionally I'll have parents come and talk to you on conferences to answer your question. But the parents who, who see it and get it, and even the kids are like, oh, go meet Mrs. Gellman, it's conference time, I'm here, you know? So that's nice to be able to.
Like connect.
Yeah.
Do you have a waitlist then for kids that are, that's funny?
Well, no, because what, we're, we're taking as many from the red. So when the STAR tests them and then they fall in the red, then we do devils on them and have a comprehension role piece. We will take those kids who fluency is really low.
Yeah.
But we're still in the back of our minds having these other kids who definitely use the help, but so maybe we might go talk to a classroom teacher and say, hey, I can't take Sammy, but this is what you, you know, you could do. Or I helped the ML teachers because they're right across the hall from me, so I've given them a lot of materials and stuff they could do.
I think knowledge is power too. So like, I think that the more we can offer on choice PD days, like offer these like, hey, how do I help a kid who's struggling with fluency? If I'm a science teacher, I'm a, you know, a social studies teacher. How do I do that? And I, I have, I have created slideshows that I pushed out, but I haven't offered any necessarily as a PD yet. But I think when we give those teachers those, more tools in their toolbox, I know we already have so much on our latest teachers, but if we give them the tools to be able to do some of this, you know, integration into their head, we're reading the scientific law, I know these kids struggle with reading. Oh yeah, let's just get this thing that Lori had sent out and these are some questions I could ask them or these are some things I could do with them. And again, more important, the idea of pushing into these classes could be helpful too.
The other huge factor is the majority of these students are not reading at home. They're not loving sitting down, I would say a good portion of them with a book. Maybe it's not being modeled in their house. So I think that is another, another factor and it'd be great to, you know, be able to inspire them. Hopefully we have with some of them to be reading at home. I mean, kids will borrow books from me.
Yeah.
So it's a good sign. But I, I don't know in many houses, you know, everyone's on their devices all the time. So it's, it's hard. It's harder for us, I would say.
I'm sure, especially without the library then, where kids can go to get a book if they're not going to the public library.
We have had the librarians-
We will have a little library.
Yeah, and we have the librarians come in, and they did offer, this is actually a really cool idea, was like a reverse book there. Like basically, they bring the books from the public library to the schools, so those kids that don't have, you know, the libraries in the house. So I really liked, that was one of the team librarian's ideas. And again, that's again, another cool idea that I would like to get up and, up and dining. Or even if they do that same idea, that same concept with the books that we have housed in the Kennedy Old Library, maybe we could just do that same idea that the public library is offering.
Yeah.
I don't, what happened to the Joyce?
They're downstairs. They're there. They're here.
Okay, so any further questions from the committee? Yes, Mr. Austin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No question but a comment. What I really appreciate by the two of you is, is the passion that I see, and the kindness, and I love it, not only for our young people, but I feel like for each other. I really appreciate that. I love seeing great camaraderie. And as I'm sitting here and listening to each of you, and I'm just thinking, what comes to my mind is, how much credit do we give to the curriculum or the resources? As someone that has used, created curriculum and used, you only can give us so much, and I want to give you guys credit, because you guys have to bring it forth. And the person that's using the tool is only, the tool is only as good as the person using it. And so I just wanted to kind of encourage each of you, because I have, you know, kind of heard some of your frustration, and I want to say this, continue to be you, and I love that you brought culture to our young people. As someone that wasn't enthusiastic about school when I was younger, to have a, an adult that's assisted me bring Demure, or bring something from TikTok, or, and I think that's awesome, because I think a lot of times our young people don't have that connection with an adult. And I, and I see you guys going above and beyond, and so I really appreciate you. Keep doing what you do. You guys are amazing. I appreciate you very much.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, thank you, Mr. Austin. Any further, yes, Mr. Moren?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have a good, great presentation, ladies, I appreciate it. I guess where you want to go, you have offer more choice PD for teachers on PD Day. And you mentioned a little bit, Lori, just quickly, an example of what, you say you have a couple of slides, or you already presented all to the staff.
Yeah.
If you had the opportunity to present at a PD Day, what would that look like, sort of, kind of?
You, I would do, so basically, I think like, teaching about like flow fluency, I think that more, we could get more like sisters for flow fluency. Instead of children just sitting in, let's say, in an SSR, which stands for Sustained Silent Reading Area, and a lot of them are just flipping through pages and not really digesting anything, we could get a lot more kids onto the flow fluency program, and maybe training some teachers that really doesn't, I mean, I could be the newbie person, but if we have a couple people that might be, take under my, you know, take under our wing and kind of teach them to do that. I think the ML teachers have been very open, they're amazing. Mrs. Baskin and Mr. Borges at the Kennedy have been amazing. They constantly are coming to me for, you know, we, we share, goes both ways, but, I mean, you know, I'll say, oh, I have these, you know, decodable texts that Courtney had gotten, and they're called the, the series that we have, and they're great. And I said, oh, I bet these would be really beneficial for your MLs. Because a lot of times he says, oh, I have these books over here, but when you, you think something might be better.
Well, and then, and another PD too, is just to, like, the one I did last year was just a piece of comprehension. So giving teachers little snippets, or ideas, or lessons, or units, and just providing it, teaching it to them, and then they can take it into their classrooms. The visualization one, people really enjoyed last year. So I think it's just, you know, all the pieces of literacy that teachers, you know, some of them haven't been trained in it, like a science teacher.
That's my point exactly.
Right.
You two are the interventionists.
Right.
So can we get like interventionist aides, interventionist assistants, you know, just kind of build a team a little bit more than just interventionists? Like you said, Lori, just, you know, teachers that aren't aware of what you're doing, bring it up on a PD Day and say, this is what we do.
Right.
PD this, this is what we're here for.
And even like, I could teach science, so right, being able to show them how to break down like a science text with their students. Get, get that higher complexity text. Give them the complex text, you know, instead of like scaling it down and kind of modeling how to do that, I think that'd be really helpful. And I know in some other school districts, they have ML, like interventionists.
Yes.
So they're specifically working with that population, where I feel like there is such a big need in the red. I think maybe somebody who, I mean, I, I love that elevation platform, thank you to whoever brought that in, because it's fantastic. It's one of the new platforms, and it gives great strategies. They're not just for MLs. I feel like they would be beneficial strategies for, for anyone.
Yeah.
If you wanted to go through that. It's amazing, oh, right, yeah. So it's, but it's amazing, and I find it very helpful, and I am working with that population and thinking, these strategies are good teaching strategies, you know?
And this is a quick comment, the fact, you know, display boards, both at the Kennedy and the Joyce here, an opportunity for the students and staff as well, to see that, instead of just getting it in your classroom, doing the lesson, and moving on from the date, it's right there. There it is, each day you walk by, it kind of catches your eye, and you want to read part of it, you know? Oh, I happen to know this kid, I was part of that breast cancer awareness, I played hockey with those guys. So it kind of incorporates the entire school, you know, it gets everybody involved, so I really appreciate what you're doing. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moren. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, moving on. So members, I want to discuss something with you. We have an executive session, and the mayor is here for that purpose. I, I was thinking we would get the redistricting update from Dr. Crowley, and then I might take a motion to take executive session out of order, in order to accommodate the mayor's schedule, and also, the person here to present the, the security issues. So anyways, we'll hear from Dr. Crowley on a redistricting update, and then we will maybe move around the agenda. Thank you. Dr. Crowley, take it away, redistricting update.
So it's actually a tough act to follow, so, and I, I will be as brief as I possibly can, because one of the things that Ms. Crowley and I discussed is this being a recurring item on our agendas as we move forward. So for tonight's purpose, as, as you know, we have agreed to a consultant, Sandborne is the name of the consulting company. What you don't know is that we have sent all of our data to Sandborne. I would also like to say thank you to Matt Barrett, the GIS person at the city, who sent data to Sandborne as well. Tom Quinn has actually been in, in contact, he's the building inspector, because we're trying to anticipate when new developments will become online. So there's, there's been a, a good conversation with city, city hall people, and then with the consultant, we've been going back and forth since our last school committee meeting. We also sent postcards over the holidays to families, and hope, we're doing that to just verify addresses, and so we're in the process of making sure that the students reside where they do, and so that we are, when we go through this process, we are validating and verifying our data. We have a meeting scheduled in person for Thursday afternoon this week, and that's the first time in person that we will be having a meeting. I believe it's Mr. Lipsit and Ms. Wetzel from the school committee will be part of that meeting. There's some school people, a couple principals, myself, Ms. Ryan, Ms. Young, will be part of the, that meeting on Thursday afternoon. It's followed up by a, a virtual meeting with the, uh, Sandborne on Friday. And then we will push a lot of this information to the resource subcommittee meeting, and then we have a meeting scheduled for next week. Ms. Wetzel's the chair of that. And so we will be getting information to the committee in real time through the, through this process. So I, that's, that's where we are with redistricting. Our next meeting, school committee meeting is June, or June.
You wish, you wish.
That's optimistic. Is January 30th, and so you can anticipate, this will be an agenda item with more information to follow.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Crowley on the redistricting update? Yes, Ms. Cormier. The postcards were sent to which, like, certain families, or?
Everybody in the Woben Public Schools.
Mr. Moren, you had a question?
I did, Madam Chair, if I could. Last meeting, I asked the superintendent to come up with the, a cost analysis, so I received the information tonight of the first payment in one out of Sandborne. But again, I know it's, it's on the calendar for our next meeting. Tonight's an update. I'd just like to have an output so that the parents, the staff, the community would know that the redistricting will be done by. So just keep that on your agenda, that, you know, it's going into, you know, spring break, February vacation almost. Next meeting is the end of January, so I just need to get word out to folks, as we know from last time, all the emails come in, everybody has an issue with something, and I want to be able to address each and every one of those issues before we either pull the plug or go to green light on the redistricting. So we'll just look forward for further information, looks like Thursday, Friday, and then on the 30th. So I appreciate tonight's update. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moren. Mrs. Vice Chair Chisholm.
Well, they could, on the, the meeting for the committee, that I didn't even know we had, but anyway, they, hopefully we can get a timeline to the, to the school committee, so that we know exactly when.
Sure.
Because people have been asking, like, when will the public here? And I think that we just, we promised them this would go fast, and we'd be very involved, and we would be doing it. And again, like Mr. Moren said, it's January, I just don't want this to be April again, and have people get really upset, not have time to actually do anything about it. So if we could have a timeline, so that it could be adjusted a little bit, but I mean, so that people know that, yes, by February 15th, we will have some sort of a plan. And on the, the ad verification, so that, I'm assuming once you get a list of that, we could even send out the supervisor of attendance to make sure that people actually do reside or don't reside.
Yeah, some of it was like apartment, you know, numbers, things like that.
Yeah.
So, but we'll, we'll go through that process.
Yeah. And a lot of it too, is like, I live in a circle, and people come, they go to the road. It depends on your mailman. There's some that would say, I know that they live in the circle, and there's others that just send it right back. So it could be something like that, but just verify as much as we can before we get into this.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm. And I, I'm not sure, the advisory meeting, I think it was an issue that caught, caught between Mr. Lipsit and I changing leadership.
It was, it was mentioned at a previous meeting.
Yeah.
But I don't know if the appointments were mentioned.
So let's just make sure that at our next meeting, if this, Ms. Chisholm is asking questions, we should be, describe what the advisory meeting is and what the purpose is, so-
And like who the members are, that, right?
And who the members are, yeah. Thank you, Vice Chair Chisholm, I appreciate that feedback. Anything else? Seeing none, great. Okay, so again, I will accept a motion, even though I, I wish not to, but I will accept a motion to move executive session out of order, for the purpose of discussion and deployment of security personnel or devices, strategies and respect therein, because we have the security consultant here. It's 8:25, and the mayor has been waiting patiently to, to meet with the school committee as well. So I'll accept that motion.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Second.
And, sorry, Dr. Crowley.
I'd like to do the roll, yeah. That's all right.
Mr. Austin.
Yes.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Mr. Moren.
Yes.
Ms. Wetzel.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Crowley.
Yes. And I, I suppose we have two issues in executive session, I'll also say we already voted to go into executive session, but we also- Yes. And I suppose we have two issues in executive session. I'll also say we already voted to go into executive session, but we also.
I will announce that on executive session topic number one, which is the deployment of security services, there was no vote. I will announce that on executive session topic number two, on the collective bargaining or litigation, there was a vote. Okay, so moving on to subcommittees, finance and personnel, vice chair Chisholm.
Yes, we did meet on December 18th here at Joyce Middle School. And we'll just need to vote on our list of bills. Warrant one was 1,899,385.63. Warrant two was for 1,862,928.45. Warrant three was 239,962.81. And warrant four was for 2,146,536.32. So, motion to approve those bills.
So moot. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Yep. And we just talked about the budget, which will be a topic of conversation forever. But those minutes are part of a consensus, so we're good.
Thank you. Any questions for vice chair Chisholm? Seeing none, great. Community relations subcommittee, Mr. Austin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did meet, we met on December 10th, Tuesday, 2024 at 4:00 p.m. here at Superintendent's conference room. In attendance was Ms. Chisholm, Ms. Wetzel, Ms. Young. We also had guests from Mystic Valley area NAACP, Christopher DeMayo and Martha Simon along with myself. Topic, first topic was, and I won't go in deep, was community engagement updates, literacy, community update, as well as, let's see. You know, I'll just say those updates were submitted by Courtney Young and it can be viewed in my minutes. The fourth item on the topic was school communication with the public. We agreed to postpone the discussion and lay the time as far as the Facebook government page. We made a vote that day. All in favor, 3-0. Topic number five was brought by Ms. Wetzel. Ms. Wetzel informed the subcommittee that community members reported that Joyce Middle School doors was often locked during scheduled public meetings. We discussed various methods to keep the doors open to ensure all meetings are accessible to everyone. One suggestion made that was to include custodial staff in emails about upcoming meeting times. Ms. Young indicated that she would reach out to the director of facilities, Lenny Bernham, to discuss a plan to ensure that the school doors are open during scheduled time. Now, let's see, the sixth, next topic was a look into a further conversation on to move forward potential actions on the subject of the letter to NAACP on racial harassment, discrimination broadly in rural public schools. So I gave a kind of a recap as far as what took place over, I guess, several weeks, starting in October 27th, which was an email received from Gregory Bartlett of NAACP. I won't go in too depth, too, too deep as far as that portion of the meeting, but it's all in my minutes here. Let's see. During this particular subcommittee, I kind of gave like a, an overview as I stated, and I mentioned some notes that were, that I was briefing from Gregory Bartlett. And Ms. Chisholm asked if that could be entered into the, into the minutes, which I did. I agreed, and it was, so it'll be posted in the minutes as well. We also discussed various strategies of moving forward as far as how we can, I guess, go forward with the letter received. Mr. Austin, myself, I mean, subcommittee aware of the plans that I plan to attend different actual school clubs, activities, or additional methods where we can listen to students concerned. I also welcome to other school committee members with the option to accompany me in potential and varying sessions to listening to students. I also stated to not speak to one particular group. Instead, I plan to speak to all students who have comments or concern, as well as provide students with public meeting information from school committee meetings. A suggestion was made that the subcommittee connect with the liaison of the WPS. And members of the MVA, NAACP mentioned the idea of WPS having an education, an education equity consultant, similar to the work that has been conducted in other schools. Christopher DeMayo submitted some information. I also, he asked me to be put into the public records, which I did. So there's a link here as well. There's a, there's a good information here, so I will not read any further considering time. I'll go to number seven, which was conversation about establishing a connection with the WUBR CPAC. Ms. Wetzel stated that she's spoken with WUBR CPAC and is looking to continue collaboration with them and efforts of the SSA. I also stated that I'm looking to collaborate with WUBR CPAC as well. Future meetings, we're looking to meet, if not this month, next month, in regards to continuing the conversation in regards to the letter from NAACP. And I'll read this. We spoke about chain, I'm sorry, let me read. So I said, we decided to instead have future meetings. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess the time is late. Oh, here we go. We are seeking to have a joint meeting that may involve stakeholders from rural public schools, as well as Mystic Valley area NAACP, which will maybe involve school committee members, also administration. as well as the Mystic Valley area NAACP, which will maybe involve school committee members, also administration. And we adjourned at 5:20.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Any questions, Mr. Austin? Seeing none. Curriculum, Mr. Lipsit.
I will be brief because the topics that we dealt with in curriculum are going to be coming back to both curriculum and the full committee very shortly, but we met to take a look at some draft discussions on competency determination, just really broadly, I'm sorry, we met, thank you, Ms. Cormier, we met yesterday. It was yesterday. At 4:00 p.m. in this very room. Present were Dr. Crowley, Ms. Young, Mr. Rastin from the high school, Ms. Gustenhoven, and Mr. Daley, curriculum coordinators, and school committee members, Mrs. Chisholm, Ms. Wetzel, and myself. And so we met to discuss competency determination, which broadly, when the vote in November removed MCAS as graduation requirement, what Desi is asking districts to do is create a new competency determination to fill that gap. It cannot be the same as our graduation requirements, so Ms. Young has started, in coordination with curriculum staff, with high school staff, to put together an understanding of where we might need to go, both in an interim and in terms of long-term competency determinations. Those, the subcommittees sort of took a look at some of those drafts, offered some thoughts. That team is going to go back and sort of finalize that. So we will be meeting again on Monday, January 27th at 4:30 to go over a final proposal and recommend it to the full committee or send it back. We, very similar with the program of studies, which is very much tied in some ways to the competency determination, so we didn't take any votes on the program of studies. That is going to come back in more full form later on, but we got some updates in terms of what has been begun and what has been changed in the coming draft. So we adjourned at 4:59.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsit. Any questions, Mr. Lipsit? Yes.
If I may, Madam Chair, from the curriculum subcommittee of 2024, and I guess it's more important for Ms. Young back there, the subcommittee met on December 16th, 4 o'clock, here at the Joyce. Again, one of the items was program of studies. Ms. Lipsit included that tonight. We had the Live Letters, Morphin, Magic, and Lexia handouts along the way, doing very well in grades four to eight, and Ms. Young presented a Reveal Math program for the elementary classes. Capital Monies for three years in the works, similar to what we had for the high school history. It's been our research development, already been used, user-friendly, and Mr. Austin was present, myself, Mr. Austin. He voted 2 to 0 to bring this to the full committee. I don't know if Ms. Young wants to talk about Reveal Math elementary program tonight, or I'll just make a motion to approve the funding for the Reveal Math elementary program.
Yeah, so the approval process was for the purchase, and then I know that we have Ms. Fain's, the STEM coordinator at the elementary level, is queued up to come in soon and provide the update to the committee. But we've had 20 teachers in pilot mode for about a year and a half before this decision was made.
Any idea, any concerns with that? And in that case, I'll make a motion to be approved, the Reveal Math program for elementary aid.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? And can someone clarify that we've already been using this and this is just?
Yes. So the program that we approved at the high school and adopted in year one implementation at the high school this past year, we've gone through the implement, a full process for selecting the program. The program was selected unanimously by the teachers. It's been piloted in classrooms for well over a year and a half, and that this portion of the, is, this vote is for us to purchase the program for the remaining staff members.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor? Aye. That motion passes.
Also along those meetings, Chairman was, the MCAS, as Mr. Lipsit indicated, we're going to review that study with Ms. Young later on for the, after the vote. I've asked to have Courtney, Ms. Young and the administration investigate the return of elementary language. Elementary language, we used to have a flow that went around and taught language to the students, kind of just went away, and Ms. Young's going to look into perhaps bringing that back in the near future. And I'm meeting adjourned at 4:30 that afternoon, so that's the curriculum update from 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Mallrennan. Any questions for Mr. No, you don't, because he was 2024. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mallrennan. And policy, Ms. Cormier.
Thank you. We met on Thursday, January 9th, 2025 at 4:00 p.m. Ms. Chisholm and Superintendent Crowley were in person in the Superintendent's Conference Room, and myself as chair and Mr. Austin were remote. Did you receive my minutes, Jean? I will make sure I send them to you so I don't have to read everything off of it, but I will, I want to table some policies that we put forward through the zero. So minor changes, just the categorization, AE, BA, BAA, BCA, BDA, BDBB, BDC, BDD, BDF. Also, from the August 2023 MASC newsletter, again, all approved to present to the full committee, IHBA, IHBD, IHBF, IHBG, IHBGE, IHBH, IJ-R, IJ-L, IJ-L-R, we would like to remove because it is redundant with IJLA. Also reinforce IJLA, IJ-O-A, IJ-OAR, IJ-OAR-1, JH, JHR, IKAB, ILB, IMB, IJOB, and IGC. So I will make a motion that we table all of those listed policies.
Okay. I have a motion to table those policies for further school committee action.
Second.
Do I have any discussion on that motion? Ms. Cormier, what verb did you use? Did you say reinforce?
Just continuing, yes, because, yeah, it was the still moving off the list of the reinforce.
Yeah, right. Okay, I just, yeah, thank you. Okay, any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Those policies are table till February, 1st, February meeting?
January 30th.
January 30th. Okay, thank you.
We will discuss. And then the first meeting in February, we can vote. I will forward those minutes to Ms. McLeod, as I have to everyone else, and those will be available on the website with a link to all of the policies which have the edits visible.
Yes.
Redlined. We are looking to meet in February. I don't know if Dr. Crowley has yet talked to Dr. Dan Rastin about the date.
Yeah, he's available. Is it February 6th? Was that the date that we?
Yes.
He can be available on that date.
Okay, but not this school vacation week?
The preference would be for the, for the 6th, but he can make himself, he's not on a plane is how he framed it.
So would you like, I mean, is there a preference?
I'd rather have him come during, on the 6th, if that's, if that works.
As the school day, for sure. So we will be meeting February 6th at 9:00 a.m. in Superintendent's Conference Room, and also in my minutes is a list of policies that we will be looking at that time that are still sort of in process from last year.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cormier. Any questions for Ms. Cormier?
And we adjourned by May 4th.
Sorry. Thank you. Now does anyone have any questions? Does Cormier have a question? Okay, great. So that concludes, well, we don't have, I'm sorry, we don't have BCPC updates, and we don't have ECP task force updates. Is that right, Ms. Wetzel?
No, but if I could briefly.
Of course you can.
We don't have an ECP task force subcommittee update, but on February 4th, I'll be at the library at 6:00 p.m. holding just a community conversation for anyone that would like to provide input on anything related to the ECP around the potential use of modular classrooms. So that's, some community members, anyone's welcome to attend in the public, and I believe some community members will be there as well, but it's more of a general conversation for anyone that might have questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel. Committee members can certainly go, we just can't deliberate, or we'll have to post it. Okay. Yes, Ms. Mallrennan?
The Student Services and Achievement 2025 subcommittee?
I apologize for that. I had crossed it out because you.
Well, because I met this evening, I have on the record that we met, and minutes will follow.
Thank you, Mr. Mallrennan. I apologize for that.
And Resources, too.
And Resources, go ahead. When are you meeting?
We haven't met, but we meet January 21st, 4:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. So SSA met tonight, and Ms. Mallrennan will deliver his minutes next meeting in Resource meeting, January 21st. Thank you very much. Okay, as for correspondence, I got one email from Rachel Kuhberry regarding a information about a timeline to consider the building projects. And so I think what, I'm still working out what the agenda will be with Dr. Crowley, but I expect that the buildings will be on the agenda for your consideration. And by that I mean, the recommendations from the BCPC will be reemerging. Future agenda items, does anyone have any future agenda items?
I have a couple, Ms. Crowley, that I emailed. Ms. Crowley, if I could just.
Yes, thank you for doing that, Ms. Mallrennan.
I'm going to go through those just so those are where I.
Of course. Go ahead.
No particular order. Please invite retired SRO Ed Fumicello in and have his replacement in as well to introduce himself, congratulate Ed on his retirement. Perhaps supervisor of attendance in for an update and a status report from the supervisor of attendance. Report from Mr. Lipsit from the MASC conference, any votes that were involved with or resolutions that were taken. Ian Hunt, track coach, bring in perhaps some Woburn High athletes that competed at the national level representing Woburn. Dr. Albin from Tufts, or Nelly from our FACE organization. Updates on a very successful Burlington School Health Clinic. Ms. Mendez, Ms. Mendez in from Rec Department, in person, or, Ms. Ambler, in person, or spring update from her. The public relations firm, again, in attendance, a report about Woburn Public School matters, and what they've submitted to anyone, where it's going. And again, the art display here in this school committee room, we don't, we don't want to display them. We don't have the chairperson mention the students. I don't know why they're in a public viewing area, but I'd like to see that return. I also attended the Health Fair Clinic this weekend, and again, lots of partnerships with the Woburn Chamber of Commerce that perhaps the school department could get involved in. A quick invite from the Chamber of Commerce director, just as to what he's been doing and what possible connections and cooperations he may have with the membership there. Also, I realize we no longer have the sex offender registry display boards in any of our buildings, do we? We used to display all the sex offenders in the areas. I thought that was, again, public knowledge that people were aware of.
It's on the network website. I didn't know.
It used to be in the school, it used to be in the school building. I've seen it over at the Northeast Voke and other places. I'd like to see that return to the school system. And again, we had executive session tonight, but a future executive session, the boys' basketball coach update. Again, just a couple of things that I sent to Ms. Crowley. Again, some of them might be easy, some might be quick, some might be complicated, some matters that I'd like to see brought before the committee in the near future. Thank you very much.
Okay. I can say that to disclose the names of artwork around the room would require someone to release the names of Woburn Public School students, which would be problematic, but I can address that.
Was it on the wall somewhere over there?
It used to be, but we took it down for this exact reason.
The same reason why we don't post students in classes and say they're on the outside of schools. Okay, Ms. Young?
I just wanted to remind that next week, the Department of Defense and Secretary of Education has been notified. The district will be in district for the week in all ten of our buildings, as well as interviewing staff, student, and there's a family focus group that went out. There was more through Dr. Crowley's office.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Good information to know.
And they'll also be interviewed swiftly.
Yeah, I wanted to mention, I received a invite flyer from Mrs. Charles of Woburn Memorial High School from the Black Student Union. She's their advisor. There's going to be a celebration of Dr. Manu the King Jr. on tomorrow. It'll be from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It's going to be the second annual oratorical competition. There'll be an art and photography showcase. There'll be a keynote speaker, which is going to be Latoya Edwards. She's an Emmy award-winning anchor of NBC 10 Boston. So I wanted to bring it to the public, and hopefully others can attend. I'll be there myself.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Any future agenda items? I think Mr. Mallrennan gave you enough to do.
There's quickies, they're all quick stuff.
No, that's fine, Mr. Mallrennan. Anything else? I'll accept the motion to adjourn. So moved. All in favor? This meeting is adjourned.